...schedule a survey that didn't happen yet. We'll move on. We'll start with the invocation by Mr. Hawke and the pledge by Mr. Lynch.
Father, thank you for this opportunity to meet together in freedom and at our luxury of time that we have. I just pray that you would help us tonight as we deliberate, that we would do well for the city. And I just pray that you would bless this city and bless all the efforts of our service departments and the fire and the police, all the safety and everybody that's involved in our city, that they may be diligent in their work and that they may be safe. I may ask this in your name.
Can you join me with a pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Hawke.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Jennings.
Here.
Lynch, Johnson, Johnson, Lynch.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Jennings.
Here again.
Come on, see if he's here.
Oh, I made Chrisman. Sorry, Chrisman.
He's here, too.
Yes.
I'll make her.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Johnson.
I'll say.
Roll call, please.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Now, next on the agenda is approval of minutes for student council meeting with our Villarreal School, May 14th this year. Any corrections, additions, comments?
No, but then it's fine, I love it.
I'll make a motion to accept as presented, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hawke.
Abstain.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jennings.
I abstain.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes. Moving into the business session, number one on the agenda of that part is communications. Mr. Dunne. Report of council committees. Tendre will be busy, you've got two. You've got a blue one from May the 7th, 2018. Take that first, you're in order.
The Service, Safety and Recreation Committee met in a second floor conference room located at 105 North Main Street on Monday, May 7th, 2018, at 5:00 PM. Denham resided, and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Jennings, council member; Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council member; Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Jim Chrisman, council chairperson; Mr. Ron Sockman, service director; Mr. Brian Hoddinger, police chief; Mr. Conmee, fire chief; Mr. Joe Denon, city manager; and Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney. Number one, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Police Department. In particular, the committee noted a recent successful drug arrest at the Blue Stone Inn. Number two, the administration advised that the software provider for their police department had been acquired by a new company. In the future, the software currently used by the police department will no longer be supported. Therefore, a new software selection is required. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with research and selection of a new software program for the police department. Number three, the committee discussed a request to remove parking restrictions on Beacon Street. The committee recommended that the city manager exercise his discretion with parking traffic rules and resolve the request. The parking restriction of parking on only one side of the street will be removed on a provisional basis. Number four, the committee noted that the local construction cost share of the Washington Avenue project will not be financed by a grant and loan from the Ohio Public Works Commission of nearly $1,223,000. Number five, the committee recommended that the administration proceed to bid street paving. Number six, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council selecting Sandtech for engineering services for the Temple Street Bridge deck replacement. Number seven, the committee benefited from a review of wastewater treatment plant project. Number eight, the committee noted that the court case designed to resolve questions of the ownership of abandoned rail lines near the community was awaiting a decision from the common police court. Number nine, Mr. Denon advised the committee of a recent request from Mr. Johnson that he, Mr. Denon, publicly apologized for recent events at a forthcoming meeting of city council. Mr. Johnson communicated his message demanding action by Mr. Denon to Mr. Pitstick, who then communicated Mr. Johnson's message to Mr. Denon. The committee commented that the mode of communication was strange. Further, the committee failed to understand why Mr. Denon should apologize for recent events when he had done nothing wrong. The committee did not see how Mr. Johnson's request would benefit our community. The committee advised Mr. Denon to make no apologies. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hoppe, Chairperson, Service, Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
City of Washington Courthouse Service, Safety and Recreation Committee minutes for June 4th, 2018. The Service, Safety and Recreation Committee met in a lower level conference room located at 105 North Main Street on Monday, June 4th, 2018, at 5:00 PM. Denham resided, and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Jennings, council member; Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council member; Mr. Ron Sockman, service director; Mr. Brian Hoddinger, police chief; and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Police Department. Number two, the committee recommended that the administration proceed to bid the Oakland Avenue project. Number three, the administration advised the committee of the possibility of hiring a company to expedite the paving of Clearview Avenue. Number four, the committee benefited from a review of drainage issues on High Street. Number five, the committee recommended that the Safety, Service and Recreation Committee times be changed to 9:30 AM and that Abatement and Nuisance Committee be changed to 10:30 AM on the first Monday of every month. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hoppe, Chairperson, Service, Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Yes, on the, just, on the committee benefit review of drainage issues on High Street, can someone go into detail a bit about exactly what issues we, or how we're going to control that problem?
I think you're going to hear more about that in a little bit because we have a local resident with us tonight.
I got you.
That's directly involved with the issue. So, Steve, we can talk about it now or when Molly comes, I can talk about it now.
That'd be fine. Later, it'd be fine, when it comes up. Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes. Next is reports of city officials. Mr. Denon, city manager.
Thank you. This time of year, it's time to remind everybody about Fire in the Sky. Really would like to thank everybody involved with putting that together every year, and in particular, its association with the Washington Fire Department has always been something that I've been very proud of, current and former employees involved in Fire in the Sky. Would like to thank all the council members that have donated, that is sincerely appreciated. The Fire Department will be having a drive-up Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 with the Fire Department. At this point in the year, Fire in the Sky needs to raise about $5,000 more to make this the best fireworks show in the state of Ohio. For this time of year, it's in pretty decent shape. The community has always been very generous in their support of Fire in the Sky, so if you're out and about on Saturday, we would appreciate you stopping by there and helping us out. And again, that's only possible because a tremendous number of people in this community care about that, they're willing to give of themselves and donate a huge amount of time and effort to that work. Would like to thank Dell White and note that it's been a rather stressful period of time for her, but would like to thank her for investing time, effort, and money into moving the Leroux home, and hopefully in the near future, it goes to its final destination, where it should stay there for another long period of time. But would really, Dell, she's done great good there, and it's been a very stressful experience for her, I'm sure. Clearview Avenue, we referenced that in the report. Clearview had an unusual amount of damage from the winter. When we looked at that, the most logical thing to do was to dig out a section of it and to replace the base on that street. It is down for this year's paving program. We had a number of residents complain that they didn't want to wait till we got to full paving in August, so we did do some patchwork out there, and everybody seems to be very happy with that. And then in August, when we do the paving program, we will make that look like one nice street full of blacktop out there, but that, that's gone decently well out there. Main and Court, you may notice that we are absent a couple of streetlights down there. One streetlight had some issues with the wiring in the base of it, and that meant that we had to remove a couple more, and we'll have to do some digging and replace the conduit down there because something's got awfully hot in there, and do some work down there with the streetlights down there. Would like to compliment Chad Elliott, you know, we've had him out with Rankin for Patrick, preparing for a transition there in Cemetery. And I tell you, I'm just pleased as punch with Chad and with Rankin and how well they've gotten along out there, how much progress we've made out there to prepare for that eventual transition. That also means that the water plant, because we took Chad from water, has had some challenges with their staffing issues at the plant, and they have dealt with those exceptionally well and have continued to produce excellent quality product. Also, I can't fail to mention the Fire Department and their efforts with the recent fire at the Hog facility. In that fire, the fire chief suffered a minor injury, and he'll be, he's already back. But, you know, certainly, we have to compliment them for their efforts there. The tower truck, we will be doing, if you notice us today and this week, doing some additional work pumping water through there. It was hooked up to a new fire hydrant, not here in town, but the fire hydrant may not have been flushed completely properly. We may have a little bit of gravel in that truck, so we'll be investigating to make sure that we get all that out of there, and make sure we don't have any damage issues and that everything functions like it should. But if you see us out with the tower truck flowing water, that's why we're doing that. The police department's efforts, in particular suppression of the drug trade, have been enormously diligent of late, and would like to thank them for their success and their efforts with that. The longest day folks, the Alzheimer's folks that had the event downtown on Saturday, that was very nice with the car show and the different activities that they had for folks, and I thought that was just a nice event for, for the downtown community, a nice event for the community at large, and would like to thank everybody involved with that. And I have movie on the courthouse lawn on Friday evening about 9 o'clock, but we were discussing before the meeting that the weather forecast is 90% for rain, so we now know when we have a drought, what we need to do. We need to talk about showing a movie on the courthouse lawn because it pours down buckets every time you have that discussion. So we will continue to monitor the weather and talk with the downtown folks involved in that, and hopefully that, that forecast improves and they can engage in their, their movie activities down there, and we can have a good time on a Friday. That concludes my report, folks.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Ryan.
The only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is before you is the audit. Have you mentioned that? The audit of the City of Washington Courthouse is released. We made the honor of state award again, we received it. I want to thank everybody in the city. I don't know how many years in a row we have there for clean audits. There's no legal expenditures, no, you know, yada, yada, yada. But I want to thank all the people working in the city and stuff, helping that out. But it was released as of Tuesday, and we received the award again. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'd like to call Marley.
Yeah.
Pardon me? I'd like to thank you.
Oh.
All of us. Keep those of course coming.
Mr. Pitstick. Thank you. Our local residents and taxpayers, we have one signed up. Molly Mickel, do you step up to the podium, or whichever.
I am Molly Mickel, and I live at 555 High Street here in Washington Courthouse. I have talked to several of you guys, anybody that will listen to me. I've had water in my backyard since probably three months. I am concerned about the water because I don't want the mosquitoes and the bugs, and I can't mow around it, and I don't want the neighbors to complain because the grass is knee-high. Couple of times, I've got pretty ducks that are back there in my pond, you know? I guess I want to come and see what is the city going to do. Is it my fault, your fault, who's ever fault it is? It needs to be resolved before somebody else comes and complains because I have water in my yard. So, I know I've talked to several, and I guess I'm looking for a resolution of where we stand.
Joe's been working on it.
Right, I've been out there. When it's raining in particular, looked at that parking lot that was constructed on Highland Avenue. We've also had Rod out there, we had a conversation with the contractor that built that parking lot. We also have had Tim the engineer out there to look at a solution. The conclusion that we've drawn is the parking lot met all the standards of construction when it was built. It's difficult to conclude that that is the sole cause of the water in Molly's backyard. The next question is, is it, you know, is it really Molly's problem or a city problem? And actually, the water in Molly's backyard affects more than one property, and there really isn't an effective way for Molly to deal with it herself. What we've concluded is that the easiest way to deal with it is to take, and you don't have to have a very big drainage line. There's a storm sewer on High Street that we can drain that to. And to me, the most logical thing to do is that at two locations, at Molly's and then a couple houses down, is to simply install a drainage line from those two particularly low areas to that storm sewer, and you have enough fault to do that. I'm a little bit worried that you wouldn't have enough fault to do it. You will. So, then the question is just about the best method to do that. The only little hitch that you have that we need to investigate the cost of a little bit is unfortunately, while there is enough fault there, you know, those houses, they sit up on that hill, so the depth that you get to is, you kind of do, but you don't have to have that large, you know, I'm talking about that large a line, but still, you run into the issue of how far you got to dig down.
Yeah, will that drain it down with the circle?
It'll, it'll go into that, no, I don't want to get confused, is that will have no, should have no effect on that periodic storm issue that you have with that manhole and circle, that's a completely separate issue there. Shouldn't have any effect on that at all. And I think I went to a couple messages.
Yes. I want you guys to see that I really am a live person. And I've talked to my, I mean, I've been a public service person myself, you're a voice and a name, and I want you to see this is, I mean, I really am a live person. I lived there for 17 years, first year to ever have water, and I want to be the good person in the neighborhood. I invite the comment, complain because of this and that, I try to be more proactive versus reactive.
Well, that's a very pleasant.
Molly, do you think the water started after the parking lot was built?
Yes.
Do you feel that's where it started?
Yes.
Because I was out there when it was raining very hard, and in the upper left-hand corner of that parking lot.
Water just rushes right off of that. You know, I noticed that happening when I was sitting there watching it, and it's going right into whatever that basin is they have built there. Somebody did build a basin there.
Yeah.
They did build some there, and do we feel that basin's not built properly and not taking the water?
We looked into that, Stephen, the engineering conclusion from the engineer is that, no, that works like it's supposed to.
Okay.
But then you run into the problem of water has never persisted behind Molly's house and another house to the extent and frequency that it does now.
Because what I noticed was, it's like a little swamp right there. It's always wet. I even went there when it was dry weather, and it's still wet right there.
Yeah.
At the end of that part, left-hand corner of that parking lot, boom, it's just like it rushes right off of that. It looked like to me the corner of the parking lot's dipping.
I'll review that again with Tim, but what I think really, what I, what I want to avoid to an extent is sometimes it's better to deal with the problem that you can observe and quantify as opposed to spending a tremendous amount of time and effort in the theoretical debate about why it occurs. If there's a solution that presents itself that you can accomplish, you might as well tackle that one.
Yeah.
As opposed to the theoretical engineering exercises, sometimes you can invest a tremendous amount of time and effort in. In my experience, sometimes you don't.
Well, I think we all have to agree, though, that's when the problems start, in that parking lot.
Yes, and, you know, not only do I have it, but there's a bunch of trees behind me, and I had never seen water back in there. Now, how far the water went this spring, I didn't know because I wasn't going to get my feet wet and muddy.
Right.
I mean, I could see there was water, and I'm thinking, I've never had it before, and I could see it through the yard, and through my yard, and I'm thinking, well, then how far does it go back?
Okay.
You know, unless, I suppose, walk back with my boots and my know what's what. Even after I got back there, I wouldn't know anything, except for, I'm getting water.
Well, hopefully, after Joe speaks with the engineers a little further, maybe we can get a resolution to this whole problem, so.
That's all.
Yeah, you're going to have to, basically, you're going to have to do a little bit of drainage work back there that.
Yeah.
In effect, more than one property, or it's, you know, when, you can have a drainage problem that strictly belongs to an individual property on a, in this case, she, Molly doesn't have a way to, she doesn't have a great way to deal with herself, and it affects more than one property.
That's all I'm looking for is, I have a concern. That's all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dunne. Legislation previously introduced, A is Resolution Number R-13, 2018, second reading.
I move that we place Resolution Number R-13, 2018, on the second reading.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hawke.
Abstain.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Resolution Number R-13 dash 2018, a resolution expressing the Washington Courthouse City Council's appreciation of the annual student council meeting.
Proper adoption?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hawke.
I want to explain that I wasn't there, but I think it was a good idea. I don't know whether abstain or vote. I say yes.
You've been there before, so.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jennings.
Now, my story is.
Oh, gosh.
I wasn't there either. I told you this was a good idea, so yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes. Resolution Number R-14, 2018, second reading.
I'll move that we place Resolution Number R-14, 2018, on the second reading.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Resolution of R-14 dash 2018, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to contract with Sandtech for the purpose of engineering services for the Temple Street Bridge project.
I'll make a motion for adoption. Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes. New legislation in writing, ordinance number 4 dash 2018, first reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number 4, 2018, on first reading.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Ordinance number 4 dash 2018, an ordinance enacted and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances of the City of Washington Courthouse, State, County, Ohio.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, Mr. Randy, let the lady go first.
Just a quick, we'll reschedule this movie. I'm going to get this movie shown, one way or the other, and I want to thank David because he's helped me and doing testing of equipment, but I'm just so excited that the community's so excited, so we will get it rescheduled if that 90% holds true on Friday. And then the second thing is, I want to kind of put a buzz out there, you know, Main Street's been working really hard. We have an event coming July 13th, the second Friday of July, and it's called Taste of Fat. And so anyone, if you know a neighbor who makes the best pie, or someone who has always talked about opening a restaurant, obviously, we're inviting restaurants, caterers, all of that, but we also would like to have some community members who are known for what they do, you know, and they do it well. So, put a bug in their ear and have them get in contact with one of the Main Street businesses, and we'll send them in the right direction. And you should come with bellies empty and ready to leave that day.
Okay, thank you. Not to get blood, but I was heading right, but it was a left.
Okay.
Mr. Jennings.
Well, it's nice to get back to having council meetings again, actually.
Yeah, I can't forget how they go.
Yeah, they refresh my stuff a little bit, so it's good to be here. I'd just like to mention that lately, downtown is looking really nice, a lot of lovely new facades and paintwork and so on, artwork downtown for heaven's sakes, and lighting on the trees, and it's just, just a wonderful thing. This really looks on the rebound, and I'm very pleased with what we see. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz.
You know, just on Saturday, and I like to give my condolences to the McMurray family for their lost Gary and Rhonda, for the loss of their son Sean, and Rodmae for the loss of her husband. That was very sad, what happened, so I just wanted to mention that. Good family, good people, Sean, good guy, just very shame, that's a shame. But on the lighter note, along with what Steve just said, I had a couple of young people come to me, and they even, these are high school students, had mentioned to me, they had noticed a difference in the downtown. The benches, for instance, the benches, they noticed, because the people were sitting out on the benches, and the artwork up, and they mentioned that to me, and the lights on the trees, I heard that, exactly the same thing, and they said, "It looks like there's a different feel in the downtown." So that is something that's great for all of us, all citizens of Washington Forests. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hawke.
I've heard it mentioned several times that kids don't I've heard it mentioned several times that kids don't want to stay around the Washington Courthouse and make a career out of living here. But on the other hand, I think we really produce some good stock. They go all over the world and do things and do great things. Right now, I don't know how great it is, it's pretty adventurous. But my son and son-in-law are sailing from Victoria, British Columbia, up to Ketchikan, Alaska in a sailboat with no motor. And the first two or three days, it's seven hundred and some miles. First two or three days, there wasn't any wind, so they had to row that thing. And now the wind picked up a little bit, so they're, they relaxed enough to send some videos. But I really admire them for the adventure. Seven hundred miles on a sailboat without an engine and out in the ocean like that's kind of, it'd be scary to me. Plus, I don't know if I could endure it that long. But just wanted to say that. We, we got, our kids, we produce good kids here and, and they're ready for the world. Also, this resolution where we go and open there and make a contract with somebody for STANTEC for that bridge on Temple Street. Whoever worked on that did a good job of kind of repairing that thing because it was looking dangerous. It looked like you could snag a tire on the steel sticking out that sidewalk and so on. And last time I was by there, that looked, that looked pretty good, the repairs that they made.
They made it in the rain. It was raining that day. I stopped by and was talking to them. They were putting tarp over that, Dana. And I think, who else was there with them?
Doug.
Who was it?
Douglas.
Yeah. They were there and they were throwing tarp over that thing.
So it looks like a good job.
They did a great job on that.
They, they did a great job, but that's very.
It's temporary.
Cosmetic.
Yeah, it's cosmetic. It's temporary.
I know, but maybe it'll hold up until we get professionals or get a real job done.
Yes, I think we mentioned that in one of the meetings, one of the committee meetings, that we should do something with that because it was looking bad. We're afraid somebody's going to bust a tire or something.
That's all. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just mention what Steve and Steve, just say Steve, we covered that in. Mentioned that I think the downtown area is looking much better. You were talking about when your water problem started. I can talk about when I think the downtown started improving. And I congratulate and think it had something to do with the lady sitting back there, Chelsea, and the organizations that we have with Main Street and others, the grants that we've been able to provide for people. And so, Chelsea, keep going. We don't have a place that I ask you to get yet, but that'll decide. Anyway, seriously, it does look a whole lot better. And there's a lot of people, not just Chelsea, but a lot of people who deserve credit for that. I also just, last Wednesday, got back from France. And I've been in France twice. And the first question I always get is, well, did you get treated terribly by the French? Because that's the rumors that go around. And the answer I've had both times is, no, I did not. Ted, we were on a river boat and it had a motor. And the main thing that I went to France this time to see, Paris is always nice to see, but the main thing that I went to see was Normandy and the beaches in Normandy. Being a history teacher, I've always wanted to go there and I got to do that, walk out on Omaha Beach. And see the cemetery at Omaha Beach. And that is probably the most reverent, humbling thing I've ever seen. There's nine thousand white crosses there. And that's only half of the people that gave their life during that invasion. The other nine thousand had the bodies returned to their homes. But it is an impressive thing to see. And if you ever get a chance, I highly recommend it. It reminds you of what people had to go through for this country. Then the other thing, and I showed this to Mr. Denon because he's a Winston Churchill fan like I am. And right in the middle of Paris, across the street from the Grand Palace, there's a statue. And I figure, you know, de Gaulle or some king or queen or whatever. There's a statue of Winston Churchill. And I found that quite interesting in Paris. And on the statue, it says, "We shall never surrender," which is one of his famous sayings. So I thought, Mr. Chairman, that my saying tonight should be a Winston Churchill saying. That's what I was leading up to. So Winston Churchill said, "Success is not final. Failure is not fatal. It is the courage to continue that counts." And as we continue to improve Washington Courthouse downtown, drug situation, et cetera, I think we're doing, we're moving in the right direction. So I agree with Mr. Churchill. That's it. Thank you.
Dale, it's interesting, we have, my wife has a nephew who lives right there in Paris.
Really?
He's an auditor for one of the companies and he's, lives there. He just moved there about a year ago, so.
It's an impressive place.
Mr. Chairman, I, he kind of reminds, I didn't finish my story.
Did they take that?
It was open range, I'm with you.
No, they didn't. But anyway, this is a race that we got it. It's people from all over the world. And there's big boats, catamarans, little tiny sailboats. And theirs is kind of small. They dug it out of the field and got fixed up to do this trip. They've been working on it for about a year. JT is a veteran of the waters. I think, I thought you said that, good connection. But they, there's forty-three boats in that race. And they painted their boat red and called it Team Buckeye. All over the world, they, there's that one little boat there that says Buckeye on it. So it's kind of representing Ohio State and so, you know, whatever, actually. That's it.
That's it.
I'd like to thank everybody for their indulgence, like having to postpone this first meeting. And of course, my surgery got postponed. So I told Joe, Chief Yalz has that injury. And I told Joe that I wouldn't need my two crutches or my walker for three weeks if he needed tomorrow. If he needs them, he's welcome to them. And thank the Fire Department for the hog facility firefighting and the other fire departments that helped out. Also, thank the PD for this drug thing. It's a never-ending thing. And I finally made it to the Memorial Day program at the small cemetery. Mr. Denon gave a very good talk. In fact, he was about the only one that the PA system worked for. Most of them I couldn't hear, but he did an excellent job.
I thought you were the best speaker.
That's far as I'm concerned. Anyway, everybody did a good job. And also thank all the people that helped on downtown, like Dale said. And on Monday, Memorial Day, which has been over a month ago, I dig about the cemetery and Mr. Lynch gave an excellent talk, so, very interesting, so. And they always put on a good program, two of them, members of the veterans. I think that's all that I have. I can't remember too much. But how about a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hall.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Yes.